I call this meeting to order. Will everybody please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? Alrighty. Well, we're just... One moment, please. I apologize for the delay. Okay, let's start again. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The New Jersey Open Publics Meeting Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meeting of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provision of this act, the Cedar Grove Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be advertised by having the date, time, and place thereof posted on bulletin boards in the district, published and transmitted to the Verona Cedar Grove Times and Star Ledger newspapers, filed with the township clerk, and posted on the district's website. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Dechara, Mrs. Miga, Mr. Splendoria.
Present.
Mr. Shoner.
Present.
Mrs. Dai.
Yes. At this time, the Board of Education offers members of the public an opportunity to address issues regarding the operation of the Cedar Grove Public Schools. In this section, we allow public comments on all school-related matters. Our regulations allot 40 minutes for these communications. Again, each person shall be limited to three minutes. There will be a countdown timer, and at the end of the three minutes, the microphone will be shut off and the speaker will be interrupted. Speakers may speak more than once only after all others wishing to speak on a topic have been heard. Issues raised by members of the public may or may not be responded to by the Board. All comments will be considered and a response will be forthcoming if and when appropriate. This portion of the meeting is meant to hear public comment, not to have a dialogue between the Board and the person speaking. The Board asks that members of the public be courteous and mindful of the rights of others, of other individuals, when speaking. Specifically, comments regarding students, district employees, and members of the Board are discouraged and will not be responded to by the Board. The public is reminded that students and employees have specific legal rights afforded by the laws of New Jersey. The Board bears no responsibility nor will it be liable for any comments made by members of the public. Members of the public should consider their comments in light of the legal rights of those affected or identified in the comments and be aware that they are legally responsible and liable for their comments. As I stated, all statements will be directed to me as the presiding officer, and no one may address Board members individually. Please be reminded that if your statement is too lengthy, abusive, obscene, or defamatory, you may be interrupted, warned, or your participation may be terminated. Please also be reminded that if any person does not observe reasonable decorum, is disorderly, or disrupts the meeting, you'll be asked to leave the meeting. The Board reminds those individuals who take this opportunity to speak to, who speak, to identify themselves by name, address, and group affiliation if applicable every time you address the Board, and to limit their comments to items directly related to the operation of the school district. There was a sign-in sheet when everybody walked in, and I have three people, and the first person I have is John Martinelli.
John Martinelli, 30 Hillside Avenue, Cedar Grove. Good morning, Board.
Mr. Martinelli, I hate to interrupt you. Can you stop the clock for just a second? If you're not speaking, I ask that you please wear a mask if you're in here, please. Thank you.
Thank you.
I apologize.
No, not at all. I have asked these few questions numerous times at Board meetings and respectively, asking it again since I received no answer. I want the people of this town to know, including myself, the original EDAC members who were involved with the survey and how they were appointed. In addition, list of all EDAC members who are or were part of the Social Emotional Committee Members, also known as SEL, and how they are appointed. In addition, will any of the original EDAC members serve on the EDAC for their school year? Two, will any of the SEL members serve on the SEL Committee for their school year? If SEL is state-mandated, which is in the overwhelming majority of the people of this town don't agree with, then I'm requesting a copy of the details on what and how they are instructed to teach our children. Lastly, with reference to qualifications, how would the first EDAC and SEL member selected? Since there is an application process this year, how would they determine who serves on either committee? And I would like, I'm sorry, I would like for the whole audience to know, and the people that are watching in today, I want to, you know, if possible, like I say, hopefully this is answered this time, I want to know the names in front of everybody. We got, we want to know who the members are, for transparency.
Mr. Grasso.
Good morning, Ms. Martinelli.
Good morning, sir.
So, I was writing a couple of things down, so if I miss it, I was going to ask you for your next point.
You're welcome.
Let me start off with the process. So, the process last year was, it was an inception of a committee or a council, right? So, there were, so for SEL, there were six meetings; for EDAC, there were five meetings. The call went out to all building administrators to see if there were staff members, or if there were families, that would be willing to serve on the committee, that were interested, or rather, that have worked in this realm, whether it is social-emotional learning, counselors, whether it was diversity or inclusion activities. From there, that was the development of that process. So, one of the things that, I don't know if you had the opportunity to look, there's been a lot of interest in this, so therefore, we did listen to the public, and we put some information up on the website to look at the mission, the vision of both of these committees. And we actually took from the public, who seemed to be very, very interested in this, the opportunity to apply. It can't be a committee that is, that has 150 people on it. We've made it where you could be 20 people on there. Will it be the same people from last year? I don't know. That depends on if they want to continue that work. Will there be new people on there? Probably, there will be. So, the application process, when you go look at both the SEL Committee and also the EDAC Council, the Council itself, it asks you some questions based on the needs of those particular committees, and what it does is it shares if you've had any experience in those areas. So, very often, we might want to, you know, we might want to join that, but what do you have that could bring to the Committee or the Council itself that would help kind of move forward and help provide new opportunities for people? So, that's the process. So, a lot of what you're seeing on the website was based on the consistent conversation that we've had here in public, and just some private conversations with people that say, hey, listen, I would like to see this, and I'd like to be, you know, a little bit more open about it. As far as the Committee members, I guess my question, Mr. Martinelli, is why, what is important about knowing the, and I'm going to phrase it this way, because I know there just seems to be trust issues with the EDAC or the SEL Committee, and I understand your perspective and your point of view on that. What is the purpose of the knowledge of the members on there? And when you do acquire that knowledge, what is it that you would want to do with it?
Well, the thing is, like I say, what I brought up at last meeting was, it was in a sense that I've gotten one point of view. Now, I am a conservative, okay? And I feel that the people currently on there, it's not a good balance of the members, and that's why I want to know who are the members on there, and I think everybody, for transparency, should know who the members are there, and whether we need to get a better balance of point of view.
I totally hear that, and I will share this with you. One of the things that, and what we're planning on doing is, is that we're reaching out to all EDAC members and asking them, we'll start this once school starts on the eighth, we'll reach out, and especially our staff members, and letting them know, do you want to continue on this, on this council? I will share with you that if they come back and they want to do this, we, you know, and we'll have a conversation to release those names. My concern is, is that, like I said, I want to make sure, and I'm going to be honest, the original reason why we did not release any of those names is there were some concerns from some of the members for safety issues and safety purposes. Yes.
No, I'm just saying, I'm not trying to be serious.
I'm being very honest with you, and the reason why is because of some of the, I guess, I'm not on social media, but some of the conversations that have gone on there. So, to be respectful of some of the members, that is the reason why. But with permission, I have no problem doing that and making sure, because the people that are part of this, they're volunteering their services, right? So, it's not mandated that they be on this. They're volunteering their time. And our goal as a school district is to continue to engage staff members or community family members that want to do this without the fear of something negative happening to them. And that is, I'm being very transparent with you at this.
No, I understand that, but respectfully, sir, any other, any other groups that are mentioned that volunteer, there seems not to be a problem with their names being mentioned. I don't understand for these particular two groups.
I'm saying that these particular two groups.
Right.
Have sparked concern, especially in the community, based on what each of these committees deal with, whether it's social-emotional learning or diversity-inclusion. And there are particular opinions on that, which everybody's entitled to, but the reality of this all is, is that our goal is that if you are going to volunteer to do this, I say for you, if you were going to volunteer to do this.
I would have no problem.
Well, you can definitely go online, and you can go online, there's an application.
Okay.
Very quick, easy, I think it takes you, it takes you less than three minutes to fill it out. And then what would happen is that based on that, and the returning members, and then new members, meeting the 20 people positions, you know, that we would want on that Committee, we would want to also make sure that you're comfortable and that you, because people have had a lot of different opinions, and sometimes those opinions have caused other individuals in the community to feel uncomfortable. So, this, and so therefore, it's our goal and our responsibility to make sure that when you do volunteer for something, that you are comfortable and that, you know, that we are respecting you as well, so.
Also, sir, respectively, the SEL, which I wanted my son to be excluded from, right? If this is to, as you said, as I pointed out, anybody that wants to be part of that group, and I know it's state-mandated, but doesn't mean it's right. I just don't feel, and we don't have to go into the whole thing, because you did answer my question. I just don't understand how the Board of Education is telling us how to raise our kids, what's right and what's wrong, based on some of the information that I've seen online. So, that said, right, since you did say it was state-mandated, can I have the details on everything as far as how it comes about? Because I need to educate myself on what exactly my son's going to learn once he goes to school this year.
Sure. One of the things I can direct you to right now, when you go home later on, is that if you do go onto the New Jersey Department of Education's website, and you type in the search portion of SEL, it will break down for you the pillars, and it will break down for you the modules, and that is, that, all that is on that website is what we follow.
Okay.
And so, that will help to give you some guidance as to what to expect, and how to, how to be a partner with home and school, and how to have those conversations with your children at home, and what your children can expect when they come to school. It's also, and just to, just to give you some more information that's factual, is that, you know, social-emotional learning is also, it's mental health.
Right.
Right? And we had that conversation.
Yes.
The last meeting. So, our counselors do engage students that are in need of mental health issues, or supports or strategies, and those are things that we, we've been doing for years. And again, if there is a need to continue that, whether it's a lunch bunch group, or whether it's something where there has to be a conflict resolution to work without, to work out with an individual, parents are notified. And that's one, that's one of the things that, you know, if we want to continue that moving forward, you as a parent would be able to be a partner with that, as well as when it comes to any type of harassment, intimidation, or bullying. Very often, when it comes to something along the lines of that, there will be, will be the mental health component as well, to help guide that student depending upon what that, what that determining factor was, or that incident may have, may have had the effect on that child. So, that would be the first thing I would share with you, is that please, and that's what we follow.
Got you.
That's how we move forward.
Lastly, sir, Mr. Grasso, I was going to ask you, can we have, like, the people, is this one class, or is it infused in all the subjects?
So, the good news is, is that at our next Board meeting, Bobby Bellandi, who is our mental health coordinator and our anti-bullying coordinator, she will be doing, providing a presentation for the district, and will outline exactly what the program, what programs could engage children in, what practices, best practices engage children in, and just give a little bit more of an information session on what we've been doing for the past several years, and what the state has been doing for the past several years, and how we are incorporating into our practices here. So, that is something that we'll, we'll come to the next Board meeting.
Sounds good. Mr. Grasso, last question, and I appreciate your time addressing my concerns. I heard something, I mean, I don't know if it applies to this school, or school system here in Cedar Grove. They had, in a sense, like, body cameras on certain teachers that teach subjects that are, how would you say, not controversial, but I guess, you know, taught in this manner? Will they be wearing any kind of body cameras that the parents could listen to with, actually, they're teaching the children? I mean, I don't know if that's being introduced. I'm not sure.
No, no. And this is the first that I've heard of anything like that, that you're sharing with me right now. That's not something that we are participating here in Cedar Grove. I can certainly look into that and see, you know, where, what other districts are doing. But we, in general, we do not record our, we don't record our classes for the simple fact that, if you notice last year, when we were even using virtual learning, there are laws where we cannot photograph particular, you know, for students in classrooms, so that's why there is a very stringent way of providing virtual instruction to our students when it came to inside the classroom. So, no, that's not something that we are participating in, and it's just, like I said, this is the first time I've ever heard anything like that. But I'll look into it, just to be, you know, educate myself and keep, be informed.
I appreciate that, Mr. Grasso.
Absolutely.
I appreciate your time, and thank you, Board.
Thank you. Next, I have Leo Stringer. Mr. DeVita, you have to reset the clock.
Okay. Good morning. I think it's still morning. Leo Stringer, for Highview Terrace. I just have a couple of questions. I think they're, to me, they're related. We had a new cafeteria system, and we also had a email coming out about free lunch, about signing up for the Free/Reduced Lunch Program. And I took a look at it, and I asked Mr. Grasso, I needed to reply back to that. Every student's getting a free lunch. I don't understand why. I know it looks like it has to do with the state, but the requirements on the form have not changed. They're still based on income, and if you receive certain government programs. So, now, a lot of people know that we're not going to qualify for this, so why, why do we need to fill it out? I understand the budgeting, but the budgeting is only going to be based on people that qualify. So, I don't know why are we requesting for everyone to fill it out, when we could look at the form and say, I'm not going to qualify, so why am I going to, I do not feel comfortable giving up certain information because of data concerns? If it's not necessary, it's a waste. So, that's, that's one question. And also, the, we had a social, we have two Instagram. I understand we're not, not sure if we're technically associated with it as a school, but it definitely looks like you are. The CG Education Reform and CG Social Justice Instagram. They're making accusations, they're putting a lot of stuff out there, they're basing themselves as they're tied to CG's school system. So, if they're tied to the school system, that's a problem. If they're not tied to the school system, then I believe CG's schools should put something out there that says they're not tied to it. It looks bad, it's, it's a conflict. I don't, I don't appreciate what they're saying on there. So, it's just like, looks like, it looks association, they're even using the school colors and stuff on their things, so it's, it looks like it's a bad thing. Okay? And also, we canceled the next two meetings. Was there a reason, or was that just kind of scheduling? Okay. That's all.
Mr. DeVita, do you want to speak to the lunch, or is Mr. Grasso going to speak to that?
Good morning, Mr. Stringer.
Good morning.
So, everybody has received several letters on free and reduced lunch, and I spoke about this last Board meeting as well. So, this is a very unique year, and what is unique about it is, is that every student that attends Cedar Grove Public Schools, and that is, that is, that is part of the National Food, National Lunch Program, they are entitled to one free lunch, minus à la carte items, such as chips, cookies, extra beverages. So, every student, every district who participates in this, the federal government is allowing that to take place. So, what happens is, is that the, our food service provider will keep account of that, and then the federal government will reimburse us for food for the, for the free lunch. Now, that's one lunch. Now, if you wanted to go back for a second lunch, that's something that would not be provided for free, you'd have to go back, right? So, and again, if you wanted a dessert item, if you wanted chips, excuse me, anything along the lines of that. The purpose of the Free and Reduced Lunch Form, although every student in Cedar Grove will be entitled to a free lunch, the filling out of the Free and Reduced Lunch Form is essential. It's essential in federal funding, title funding. That is also what we, and I actually sent this out in the letter, too, the follow-up, was that that was how we in Cedar Grove had our allocations for our ester money. So, the more people that fill out those forms, those Free and Reduced Lunch forms, you may, there may be some families that may not even realize they qualified for that, you know? The information does not go to the individual school, it doesn't go to the principal, it is, it is a district form that is reported with, you know, through the business office, and therefore, that's what allows us to qualify for federal funding. So, there is a push to have families fill this out, and I, you know, I will share this, is that every year, that would be a goal, is to get as many people to fill out those forms as possible, because it does help out with our aid, and it also helps out with comparing us, when we look at our individual school district, comparing us to others in a way that is accurate. It's very, very accurate. So, those are the important pieces. It helps us with our funding, and it allows us to be able to provide services to families that may not even realize or recognize that they are eligible for that. And that's, again, it's not just free, but it's also at a reduced cost as well.
Yeah. The way I look at it, it's like filling out a loan application when you know you're not going to qualify. So, why would I send it in? I haven't sent one in in 16 years. So, I did, I have read them, I read them cover-to-cover, detailed for the first, for many years, realizing, not going to qualify, I'm not going to send this in. So, that's the thing. So, if we haven't been doing it all along, why, I just don't, I didn't understand the push, I still don't. And the other thing with the cafeteria system, so it's a snack items, things like that, how is that going to work? Because we have zero information right now. Since it's a cashless system, and we know we're not going to send our kids into credit cards, or are we? Maybe we are, I don't know. I have no idea how that's going to work.
So, just to answer your first piece, and then I'll talk about the funding and how you can provide funding for lunch service. You don't, you don't have to fill out the Free and Reduced Lunch Form. Nobody's mandating that you do that. We are encouraging families to do that, based on what I've just shared about how, what it does help with in the district. But if you feel that you don't want to do that, that's your prerogative, and you're more than, you know, willing to do that, that way. But like I said before, there are opportunities for families that they may not even recognize or realize that if they do engage in that, it helps, it helps them out personally, and their child personally, and also will help us out as a district. Now, as far as the funding for your, your child's lunch balance at the elementary level, we are using something called My.
Meal Order.
My, my, thank you, My Meal Order, where you will be able to order your child's meal at the, at the elementary level ahead of time, and at the middle and the high school level, which is very different, because the elementary schools don't necessarily have a cafeteria the way the middle and the high schools do, you will be able to use Pay, is it My Pay Central, or Pay?
Pay School.
Pay School Central, thank you very much. Thank you. And you'll be able to load a balance of credit onto your child's account. So, what we, what your, what children, what all the middle and high school children will be receiving when they enter school in the first week is a lunch card, and that lunch card looks very similar to their ID, except it's a plain white card, it has their name on it, it has their graduation year, and it also has their, has a barcode on it. So, when they go to purchase any items, whether they're à la carte, or an extra lunch, or lunch moving forward, all they have to do is scan it in, and it will identify them as, you know, Mr. Leo Stringer, and then it deducts it off of your service. You can refill the balance as many times as you like, and it'll allow you to check it online multiple times as well.
That is great to know. And the only problem with that, my concern with that was, I expected we would have heard that at the last Board meeting, not going into the first day of school.
Well, Mr. Stringer, that was why I sent out that information in the email, so therefore, you would be able to look at that, and that was sent out earlier this week, and letting you know that you could explore that, that possibility.
All right. Maybe I missed that one email. Okay. Great. Thank you. Plus, we have the juniors and seniors will be leaving school for lunch, a lot of them.
Yeah, they have the opportunity to do that.
Yep. Thank you.
And lastly, I have Dawn Dora.
Good afternoon, Dawn Dora, 56 Union Street. I don't know why I brought this. I just have a quick question about lunch. So, can you just kind of walk us through what the lunch is going to look like in, for me, I'm concerned about the middle school and the high school, but I'm sure everybody has questions, like what it actually is going to look like? Have we increased our lunch sessions? How are we going to meet those social distancing? So, that for any of the buildings that are not leaving, students that are not leaving, so that was my first question. My second question is about the high school. I know the juniors and seniors are permitted to leave, which is a great option. Is that, my understanding is, is if you sign up to leave, you have to leave every day? I would assume that is correct. I just wanted clarification for that. I know there was a stipulation in there that if you had to meet with a teacher or something during that lunch period, that they would have that option. I think we appreciate that, because there will be times that that's necessary, but then what do they do on those days if they go and meet with a teacher for 15 minutes? Then where do they eat those days? So, that's my second question about lunch. So, any information you can give us so that we can relay it to our kids, so they know what they should expect? And with the free lunch initiative, are the kids that are going home going to go into the cafeteria, pick up their free lunch, and then take it home with them? So, that's kind of the details that I think would be helpful for us. And I didn't come here with this question, but it comes from Mr. Martinelli's question earlier. I love the idea that we are all going to have the opportunity to apply for the EDAC, and I agree with you, Mr. Grasso, that you can't have 100-plus people. What is going to be the selection criteria if indeed you do get a large selection of people who do want to be on that? How are we, you know, how would the Board, or the schools, whoever's going to make that decision, choose the 20 members that will represent? That's all I have. Thanks.
You got it. Good morning, maybe good afternoon now.
I know.
So, for your first question, which is how will lunches look? So, lunches, following the Road Forward guidelines, they talk about having three feet or to the greatest extent possible in the, in the guidelines, which is a, is very vague, right? Because so, if, so for every school district, it's going to depend upon how large their spaces are, and depending upon how large. spaces are, and depending upon how large their community of students are in each building. So, having conversations with, with the administrators who are planning those, those pro, who all are planning this process together, lunch is going to look like lunch, how lunch has always looked, except what we are looking at doing is there, there, you may find at the elementary level, an added lunch period to reduce the, the amount of people, rather than having two lunch periods, you may have three lunch periods. You may, you're, we will provide the three feet or, three feet distancing, or to the greatest extent possible for our students. When, we will also be offering options of eating outside when it is possible, and for as long as we could do that. That does not involve tents, and that does not involve any other, you know, ancillary items that would provide us. So it's, it's at the, it's the availability of the weather, and things will start to get a little bit cooler as we move into the, into the fall/winter months. Inside of the, the actual lunches themselves, there is no self-service. It is all grab-and-go, prepackaged utensils, prepackaged napkins. Nothing is open container, and therefore, it eliminates the possible contamination of pathogens into a food source. So that's how that would look, as far as our lunches go. Again, with, with Mr. Stringer, we look for at the middle and the high school level to have a point-of-service system that we've invested in, therefore, it's contactless, and quick, and fast, and easy. And it also gives a little bit more control to our families, to allow them to make those selections. Prior to this year, our elementary schools were providing lunches through a separate service through the FSAs. We now are, are utilizing Pom-Townee and our food service provider for K through 12. It keeps consistency and continuity for our families, as well as following those national nutrition, those, those national nutrition guidelines that we have to follow being in the national program. Also, when we look at the high school, the high school, if, if a junior or a senior wants to leave for lunch, they may. They may not want to leave for lunch. It's an option. We opened that up, and the reason why we opened it up to juniors this year was to reduce the amount of students to follow that three-foot, or to the greatest extent possible guidelines. If we did not do that, we would very, very possibly have to utilize this room, like I shared last time, and being a high school principal myself, and knowing that when we had to utilize a space like this, it doesn't stay like this. So, and it's not conducive. It's not conducive for that. So, what we are, what we're doing is we're providing our juniors and our seniors the opportunity to go out if they want to. If they don't want to go out, they will then be able to go and eat in. We have made arrangements for, for that as well. But looking at the, the past history of, of our, of our seniors going out, most of our seniors do take that opportunity to either go home, take some time away from school, and then be able to come back. Now, when we have here kids going home and grabbing their lunch, yes, if they wanted to, they can go into the cafeteria, they can wait on the line, they can take their grab-and-go, and they can, the junior or the senior could eat outside, or they can eat off-campus if they want. But they are, every student is entitled to that free lunch.
So just for clarification, before you move on, if, if I sign my sons up that they have permission to leave as juniors, do they have to leave every day?
No, that's what I was just-
So if it's raining, they, and they choose to stay?
Yeah.
We're going to be prepared to have a space?
Yes.
For them to go?
Yes.
Okay, I appreciate that clarification.
Absolutely, and that was one of the conversations. And I encourage you to have a conversation with Mr. Bayer and Ms. Inglis about this as well, because this was something that we, we all walked through. We had multiple conversations about how will you be able to accommodate students in this scenario. So they have a very well-thought-out plan, and they'll be able to assist you with any of those other questions. But yes, they do not have to. They don't have to do that.
That would be, I think it would be beneficial if you could push that out, because there is definitely some confusion amongst the juniors, at least the juniors that I know.
Right.
That's what my children are, and we were under the assumption that it was like an all-or-nothing, which I understand, because you have to accom, you have to be prepared to accommodate them in a space.
Yeah, it's an option. I don't mean to cut you off, but like you said too, there are some times where students are going to want to talk to their teachers, or get some extra help-
Absolutely.
-or have some counseling, and they're more than welcome to do that. And that's the time to do that in. It's an evolution of that process to, to provide more opportunities for students. And, so therefore, they do have that option of, of staying here, but if they wanted to leave, if they didn't feel comfortable, they might not have transportation, they don't want to walk.
Yeah.
You know, so that's something that there is that option for.
The rainy days that are a problem.
Absolutely, absolutely.
And so the middle school, just for clarification, so the students will be able to, as typical day, go in, get their lunch, go to their seat, is it assigned seating? Are the kids going to be able to get up and move around? So they'll, they might get their, their initial box lunch, but if they want to go back up for snacks, are they going to-
Yeah, they'll be able to do that.
So they can move about, it's not-
Well, I mean, I will tell you this, they will be able to, I mean, we do not, we, since we have to follow the three-foot, feet or great, to the greatest extent possible guideline, we don't want kids gathering in little cohorts in the corner of a room.
Of course not.
What it does is it makes that a little bit more difficult for contact tracing. But there will not be assigned seats. The children will be able to eat. When they do sit down and eat, they will take their masks off. They're allowed, and that's the only way, you're able to consume the food and your beverage, right? And then when they're done eating, they could put their mask back on, and could continue socializing with their, with their peers. There's also options that they'll be able to eat outside, you know? So, there, in my experience, just to go back to the high school, I had 2,200 kids going all out at the same time for lunch, and it was, it was very surprising for, for me. As an adult, I wouldn't really want to go out in, in the rain, or into, into the cold winter, even snow. There's a lot of kids that do, and a lot of kids, you know, will fare that weather a little bit better than I would as an adult. But they will have those options, and we will, they'll be monitoring happening in the cafeteria as well. But we want to give the kids a, an experience that is as, as normal as possible. Last year wasn't a normal situation, and therefore, based on what the, what the governor and what the Department of Education wants from us, is that we do not want to stall the process of getting every child into the building and continuing a full day, and that includes all services, so.
No, no, and we appreciate it. I'm just looking for some guidance, so we can-
Yep, and I, and I'll have a conversation with Mr. Bayer, Ms. Inglis, and, and, you know, maybe they can give a little bit more information out about that. But I encourage you, because they're very approachable, and you can definitely have a conversation with them about it.
Yeah, no, I've had already, so I appreciate that.
Okay.
And just the EDEC.
Oh, yeah.
Just how you're going to choose, that's all.
So the EDEC, it'll be based on, we really, we do want to balance those, those committees, right? We want to balance them, whether we want to balance them with gender, we want to balance them with diverse backgrounds, or experiences, and that's really what that will come down to, and really look at, you know, how can we bring people to the table? It's about providing people a seat at the table, and allowing them to help provide more opportunities and awareness for our, our community, and as well, our school community, as well as our students and staff and families. So, one of the, if you look on the, on the actual application, it talks about what, what experiences do you have that relate to the committee that you're signing up for? So, we would want somebody that has some sort of background with this. It's the same thing if we were, if we were running a, a mechanics organization, right? Or, or something along the lines of that. You'd want somebody that has some sort of engineering background, something in the mechanics, something that can, can help to add to that, that conversation. Or somebody that has been involved in something along the lines of that, to help, to help move forward and provide those opportunities for families.
So, will it be a board decision? My, my question specifically is, is who's-
It'll be a collaboration of the board and the administration, yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
That's what I was looking for.
Yep.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Sure.
Have a good day, everybody.
You too.
I close that portion of the meeting. Can I have a motion to adjourn to executive session to discuss a legal matter relative to a legal issue? How do you want me to? Mr. Martinelli wants to speak again. All right, go ahead.
John Martinelli, 30 Hillside Avenue, Cedar Grove, New Jersey. Thank you, Board, for giving me that opportunity. I just had a couple of questions. They're actually not my questions, uh, just a couple of questions Mr. Stringer brought up. I would like to definitely, because I have the same question, just didn't have it available at the time. It goes back to when Mr. Stringer was up, there was two situations with these Twitter groups, the Cedar Grove Social Justice and the Cedar Grove Education Reform. If there's any affiliation with these groups, or if you support those groups? And the last question pertains to the two board meetings that were either canceled, or I don't know if they're actually being moved. Can you guys shed some light about those two board meetings, why they were canceled, or if not canceled, are there going to be a makeup?
So, as far as any kind of social media groups, organizations, there, we, what we're affiliated with is Cedar Grove Public Schools. That's it. So we do not endorse these organizations, we work with organizations. They become partners. So, whether it is the Chamber of Commerce, or whether it is, I'm trying to think of other organizations, any health, Mountainside Health Foundation, those are, those are people, organizations that we work with, that they have a, a voice, and we, and we have conversations with people. So, I don't know of any school district that, that it's part of that. Anything that you would see that comes from the Cedar Grove Public Schools will have Cedar Grove Public Schools attached to it.
Got you. So, but I'm sorry, sir. What I'm saying is, is there any kind, I'm just talking about these two specific groups.
Are there any, are there any social media groups that we're affiliated with?
No, not affiliated with, or even support. Like, in other words, because I'll be honest with you, I read some of the postings by these two groups, and in my opinion, I found a couple of, some of the stuff they did was offensive.
Right, but others don't, right? And so you do, and others don't.
Right.
So therefore, that, that provides a platform for people, you know, this is, I'm just speaking about social media in general.
No, I understand.
Social media provides a platform for people to share their opinions and their views on things.
Right.
People will, people share that with us all the time. I mean, that's one of the, that's one of the, the beautiful pieces. Right now, you're doing that with me, right?
Exactly.
You're sharing your particular views. So, we will, we will listen to people, you know, but that does not mean that we're affiliated to them, or, or the organization. But people will, will bring things to the table, and they may, you know, bring new opportunities, or they may not. There may be closed opportunities for us, right?
Right.
So, yeah, social media-wise, if you ever see anything social media-wise, you would, you would probably usually see something that was related to, with the CG Schools handle on it. That's one of the things I do want, that's, you actually bring, Mr. Martinelli, you bring up a really good point. That's one of the revamps that we're doing. You're going to see a brand-new website coming out in the short future. I know we kind of revamped a little bit, you know, earlier this year. We have a completely, completely new look, as well as any kind of Twitter or Instagram handles, that we would want to make consistent for the district, so therefore, there's an understanding that that's coming from us, right?
Right.
So, anything that you ever see social media-wise, it would have, it would have Cedar Grove Public Schools attached to it. But that's, anything out there, that's, that's people's personal views and opinions, and they're more, they're more than welcome to do that. We, as a, as a, as a public institution, we, we have meetings with people, we talk with people, we exchange writing with people and ideas, and, and the goal, I think hopefully it was with every organization, is to help better an experience for our students, and our staff, and our, our community as a whole. So, things sometimes work out, and sometimes they don't. Or sometimes you have to shelve it and come back to it, you know, months or years later. But those are all pieces that we do engage in, but that's, but we are not associated to social media by any social media group.
Okay. About the two meetings, sir?
Oh, the two meetings. So one of the things that we've looked to do, and this is one of the conversations we were having last year, is we're looking to streamline. It's a, in the very beginning of the school year, there's a lot going on, so we want to be able, in hiring practice, so what we want to do is, we want to be able to streamline a little bit better in our office. We've found a lot of times that our, our administration has, unfortunately, had to miss deadlines for certain things, so we, we are able to go and move that forward in a little bit more of a cleaner, more streamlined way.
Got you. Thank you, sir.
Sure.
Um, my name is Afi Lamptey. I live at 40 Pine Drive.
Ms. Lamptey, just hold on one second. Mr. DeVita?
The Glock.
I apologize.
My name is Afi Lamptey. I live at 40 Pine Drive. I think I can answer the gentleman's question that just came up. I am one of the administrators of the Cedar Grove and Verona Social Justice Group, one of them. So I'm just going to say a little bit of something. There's this narrative that is going around town, saying that we work for the Board, we're paid by the Board. We're not. We're not. Please ask us. We would be more than happy to share with you how the group was formed. Basically, when I moved to Cedar Grove about three years ago, I found that some things needed to be changed with the district. Not only myself, but other parents, we felt that our voices weren't being heard. So I do understand when people feel that they're not being heard. We then decided that we needed to form a group of parents who are like-minded, who wanted to see a change in social justice issues in town and with the Board of Ed. We don't only do things that are based on education, we do plenty of stuff. So I think that, you know, the narrative is saying that we work for the Board of Ed. No. If you got to know us, you would know that we do town outreach programs as well, but that's never bought up. Please, ask me. I'll be more than happy to have that conversation with you. Again, the group is open to any parents or anyone who lives in town, and who wants to do social justice work. That's it. Plain and simple. One of the reasons why it's based on invite is because we want to be focused on the things that we do in our group. We don't want the back and forth. A lot of other pages, like I think it's called Advocacy, Progress for Change, Cedar Grove, there's a lot of turmoil going on on that page. We don't have that on our page. We want to stay focused. What can we do to help the school district move forward? What can we do to help the town move forward? Those are our goals. That's it. Plain and simple. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. I don't know how you want to handle, I closed the meeting, we let more people speak, than we let now more people.
I just want to know when the meetings are going to be, the next quarter, that meeting? Are you going to have it during the day?
It's, it's right here on the, on the announcement of future meetings. It says right here, September 28th in the auditorium. That's here, 6:30 PM, 7:30 for regular meeting. The only reason we had to have a meeting today is every once in a while, we have to have a special meeting if something has to be approved that can't wait until the following meeting. It's not often, but sometimes it happens. So, and because we're at the end of summer, trying to get a quorum of three people has proved a little bit difficult. We have people who are at work, we have people who are away, some people will be away next week, and so that, that's really all it is, in all honesty. So, but no, our, our regular meetings are at 6:30 in the, in the evening for exec, 7:30 for regular, and they're streamed, and they're here. No problem. So I close that portion of the meeting. I'll say it again, announcement of future meetings. The next one is September 28th, and the following one is October 26th. At this time, can I have a motion to adjourn to executive session?
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
Uh, any discussion?
No.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Spandoria?
Aye.
Mr. Shoner?
Aye.
Ms. Dai?
Yes. Thank you, I adjourn this part of the meeting.